I'd like to call this special meeting to order. With a roll call of members.
Well, Saint Armin.
Maureen Buffy.
Erin Brewster.
Anne Sumpaco.
And Alma Smith.
Um, we have approval of three sets of minutes. Um, this is minutes I'm looking at, not looking. Yeah, so um, the minutes from December fifteenth. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion to approve?
I second.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, um. We call this special meeting because we want to. Apply for a grant which is moving forward. Uh, our next meeting, uh, November meeting. And I'd like to go right to that. Uh, with Erin, she uh, she's the one that's been doing the legwork.
Right, so it goes around, um, so first I'll summarize real quick. Um. What the, what I. We, I sent you guys on for the fifteenth meeting was to propose doing a new, an updated survey. Um, had a good discussion with um. Ms. Ludwig about it. And um. She suggested we change our course and go back to what we originally said, which was identifying a single property to nominate. Um. Reasons being is the nineteen seventy-eight report. Has a lot of already identified structures on it. Um, you may find, we may find some new ones to add, but the list is probably comprehensive enough that we should be able to choose a good property to nominate. Um. Going through the, the report and. Looking at all the properties and then having some text messages back and forth to Norma. Changed the. The direction again, and I think that we should uh nominate historic districts instead of a single property. So uh, Norm and I were thinking we combine Arkwright and Harris and make an Arkwright Harris Historic District. And also that we try to get Green on the list. So.
And we're talking national districts, not.
National.
Or national historical district. So we'll end up, obviously, it'll end up on the federal list, it'll also by default end up on the state of Rhode Island's list. Um. And then. I guess we don't, Coventry doesn't have a list, so it's really, that's as far as it goes, but we could also have a local list if we wanted. So there's like three levels for um historic properties. So I rewrote the grant proposal again, which is what you guys have here. Um. With the, so then let me get to that. The other thing that Jen mentioned was um. Because it's a fifty-fifty share for the grant. Uh, and we. In the past have had five thousand dollar budget. She suggests we go for a grant for five thousand. And. Um, so it actually a ten thousand dollar project with five thousand coming from the grant. The reason for that is because to even submit this, we need uh, a signature approval from the town representative. And she feels that the best way to um. Get that before the twentieth is if we say we're not increasing our bu- at worst case, we're not increasing our budget, we will use our entire twenty twenty-three budget to cover the. Fifty-fifty share of the grant. They'll be less resistant or not less resistant, they will have fewer questions and need fewer, need less information before they're willing to sign. Um. Uh, Ms. Ludwig also said that we should get on the. January tenth agenda for the town hall if we are in agreement with how to proceed, which we'll get into. To ask, to present it to them what we're proposing and ask for them to sign the paper at the end of the meeting. The affidavit or um, moving forward. So that's a quick summary. Did I miss anything important that we talked about?
But I have a question of um, what you have said before. It's, the cost is about for a property six thousand, does it make a difference in cost to do a district?
So I don't know. Um, to do the single property, it was a, a church in. The city of Providence and it was in twenty eighteen. They requested a grant for six thousand dollars. I don't know how much it actually costs, that's how much they got approved for. Um. Central Falls. Did an entire survey of their town in twenty eighteen also that they paid for themselves and that the to- whole town cost thirty-three. So it kind of feels like ten might be okay. If you think it's risky, we can just pick a district to apply. Um, instead trying to go for two districts.
I think we should go for two, and then if we can't, we do one.
So we prioritize the consultant for, for Arkwright Harris, for example, and then if. We still have budget left, then we have them do all the legwork for Green.
Yeah.
Okay. But we will submit that, the grant as if we were gonna go for both.
Yes.
Okay. So what you have, um, it's, it couldn't print out the abstract, there was no print to PDF button, which, I mean, right, from the grant application, so I had to copy and paste the sections of the grant application into a Word document, that's your first page, which we can read in the second. Um, and then the last three pages is actually the grading criteria that the um. The grantee, renter, grantor, will review all grants against and then the high score wins kind of thing. Um. I have been in contact with the, the grant keeper, I don't know what you call these, the, the proper name is, multiple times through email. She's willing to have a Zoom call with me. So once I get, feel like this is pretty much done, I'm gonna sit with her and ask her how we could reward things or it does. Is it weak in one area or the other to maximize our score kind of thing?
Okay.
Um. So going through real quick, I'll just read it off, um. Please keep in mind that I am learning Coventry, so there may be inaccuracies in here, and if there is, you guys need to tell me so I can fix it. Um. So this is the abstract that's currently on the ground. The town of Coventry seeks funding to hire a preservation consultant to prepare all necessary documentation to nominate the area known as Arkwright Harris. Located in the northeast corner of Coventry. And Green located in central western Coventry to the National Register of Historic Places as a historic district as. As historic districts. Arkwright is situated on the Patuxet River in the northeast corner of Coventry and extends into Cranston and Situate. It was known in eighteenth century as Rymington's Run with the erection of sawmill, gristmill, and machine shop in the early nineteenth century. Village became known as Burlingame, is it Burlingame? Burlingame? Burlingame's Mills. Eighteen oh nine, a consortium formed the Arkwright Manufacturing Company and christened the village Arkwright in honor of Richard Arkwright, the English inventor and millwright. Began manufacturing cotton here in eighteen ten. Original mill buildings have not survived, but mill housing dating from this era survives on the south side of the river. There's a mill complex, multiple mill houses on various streets and two historic bridges in the area known as Arkwright. So I don't know for a hundred percent that that last statement is correct, and is there anything else? Significant that I should add to the list?
Thing I would mention is it's the north branch of the Patuxet River, because there are two branches in town. At the very top. Airing on, located on the um, situated on the Patuxet River, the north branch.
On the north.
Yeah. There's a few branches.
Okay. Are there other significant buildings that I should call out specifically? Um, I'm not gonna list the houses, because that's their job, is to go find all the houses. Um, but we still have a mill complex, and we still have those two bridges.
True.
Is there anything else like? A church or any other building that would count in Arkwright?
Well, there's one that's already on the National Register, that's the uh.
Is it in Arkwright? Has to actually, whatever, wherever we draw the line, and it's in Coventry and in Arkwright?
Potter Court.
Which one?
Potter Court, Green, Christopher Green House.
Yeah.
It's a cemetery on Potter Court.
Also is not listed in any of the cemeteries, so if you have any cemetery you want us specifically to call out that you wanna be. That's uh, them to consider within the.
Yeah. I mean, that's one of the. It's not, well.
Can you get any cemetery using Arkwright Harris?
I would say that's. Cause that's just down from the mill.
Yeah, and then there's the superintendent's houses there, this.
Okay.
Mills, there's.
Yeah, it has to be in.
The uh, mill houses. But there is one that's on Potter's Court that's definitely Coventry.
Then, I mean, soon as you get a little further, that's Harris.
Yeah, I'm like, yeah, Miss Phoenix.
What is the name of the church?
There's no church.
Oh, there is no church, okay.
No.
Alright. So I'm gonna add any significant cemeteries to the list that we want to be considered in.
Yeah, I don't know what's.
It's on Potter's Court, does that ma- but I don't know if that makes it Harris or Arkwright.
Or Westmoreland.
No, it's definitely Coventry, it's registered in Coventry, but I don't know whether that's.
Right on that border of the two.
Who decides where the line ends, don't.
Harrison. Arkwright.
I think, well, it's in the Coventry block, it's in Coventry, the lines are all right there. Cranston, Westmoreland and.
No, I'm, okay.
Yeah, so.
Coventry lines are clear, but who decides the end of the village? Wouldn't the person who does this evaluation decide, right?
I would think.
Where the line is between Arkwright and, which is why we're combining it, so it doesn't matter.
But there's the Harris Fire Station, which is.
Alright, so let's get to the Har- Harris, so Harris is also located on the north branch. In the northeast corner of country and stands into West Warwick. First mill was built at Harris, was a stone spinning mill, built after the War of eighteen twelve. The eighteen twenty-one in. In, not the, in, see, it's always good to read these things out loud. Elijah Harris bought the site in a joint potter farm, and this is the location of the present day village. In eighteen fifty-one, a new mill was built, a third mill and dam were built in eighteen sixty, but only the dam survives. Located behind the eighteen fifty-one mill and to the northeast of several streets with houses built for mill workers. Nearby stands the mansions of the mill agents and industrial owners. There are multiple mill houses, larger, many larger homes, a mill and a fire station in the area known as Harris.
Um, you wanna, might wanna mention that Elijah Harris was a governor of Rhode Island.
Okay, governor of Rhode Island might be useful.
And then was the other one Howard?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two governors of Rhode Island lived in. One of them, Arkwright Harris, where Riverview Nursing Home is, they took, took their buildings now for Riverview Nursing Home, the two governors' houses.
Who is the second?
Howard, I don't off the top of his head.
You send me an email later of.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I can't think of his head, he was a son-in-law.
And they're both buried in Greenwood.
They're both buried in Greenwood, is, Greenwood's in Coventry, right?
Yes.
Sure. Greenwood seven, yeah, I.
So you're gonna, for this also, any cemeteries you wanna be cons- be considered in the Harris.
Greenwood's not in Harris.
No, but if there are any other cemeteries you want to be within the, the list. Okay. Alright, Green is located on Books. Boxhorn Brook, two and a half miles east of the Connecticut State Line, became a depot and market for the surrounding farm. Community providing quicker rail transport for fresh produce to Providence. By the end of the nineteenth century, it became an important stop for the daily milk run. Also an important watering station, spilling large quantities of lumber. In the eight, late eighteen sixties, a new residential area, Benefit Street, was laid out to serve growing populace. A section of nearby Great Cedar Swamp was transformed into a cranberry bog, I don't know if that's useful, it's in there. So there's a church, a number of houses, a former store, a library, and a lodge. In the area known as Green, or is all that still true?
Yes.
Is there anything else in Green that on this list that should be added?
Was the. Camp, the uh, Pentecostal camp in Green?
Well. In the village? Been developed though.
No, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I know the, I'll have to give you the name of the camp.
The, the train or.
Is it still there?
And I have the picture of the couple of pictures from my.
Should be counted.
I don't know.
Oh, so for historical significance of what used to be there.
The train, the train used to transport a lot of people, and we have pictures of it.
Yeah.
We do have pictures of it.
And uh, so that I can also attach a bunch of pictures to this grant, I wasn't intending to, but if you guys have something that you think would be useful. You also send that over.
Yeah. Pentecostal church, church field, would you say?
It was, it was a camp, it was a religious camp to go there and.
They used to have these meetings.
Yep, it was the.
It was a big.
Green meeting camp.
Yeah, I don't.
I, I mean, I have to, I'm just, I have to refresh my memory on the correct name of it, but I have quite a bit of stuff on that.
But the train ran through there, and that was a bit, an important stop for the train, and the rail was, rail was an important thing in those days.
Yep.
And that's what. Shifted. Economies to Green from Rice City, because Rice, like Rice City was a uh.
So I did, I have some words on that, I didn't put them in, do you think it's useful to, to explain the importance of? Of.
I think so.
Okay, so the um.
Of course, it was named after General Green.
I had that in here too, and I, I'm limited by the amount of space, I can't exceed a page. And I was worried that I'd be putting, I didn't know how much space I needed to summarize, but I can put all that stuff back in if you think it's helps sell the case.
General Green was from this under town anyway, but you know, I don't know.
Like. For my grandfather's collection, I have that book that was done on Green.
Uh, Squire Woods book?
I don't know, I'd have to look at.
I have it by Squire, Squire Wood.
But it's on Green, on the hit, more on the history of Green.
I think it's over here. I'll have to look for that book, it's a Coventry historical book.
Yeah.
Uh, Squire Green's book.
Okay.
And only that it'd give you some.
Words to steal, that's better.
Yeah, you know, stuff that give you some pertinent information there.
Okay, so is there, so send me anything you think should be added to this to explain the importance of these three areas. Um. I'll add that in.
And I'll send you some pictures, so.
And pictures do the work. So scope of work, a consultant who needs the professional qualification standard, standard enumerated, blah, blah, blah. Will be hired through a competitive RFP process. How long do those things take?
Minutes worth.
The reason I'm asking is I have to build a timeline. And so we won't get, if we got the grant, we wouldn't get the funds until June, but can we start the process?
Normally, something like that, you would send out the RFP and you would put a deadline on it, and that request would be answered by. Hopefully, several different vendors.
Okay, so we, if we know we're getting the grant, but we won't receive the money till July, as soon as we know we're getting the grant, can we put out an RFP? Or do we have to have the money in hand? Beforehand?
I don't know the specific rules for that grant.
The, so we'll, for, I can give you the, the timeline for the grant, I don't have it off the top of my head, but they'll inform us if we have it by March.
Okay.
But we won't get the money. Until the end of June.
Right.
So by March we'll know it's coming, we just won't have to check.
Yeah, it would be within that time.
We can post between March and June.
Yeah, then you would give them a, a date, a date certain that you want it to be um, answered. So, I don't know, you give them a month or so or three weeks to, to answer the request.
Okay. A consultant will be responsible for conducting fieldwork in order to prepare section seven of the nomination description, researching the historical development of the area in, in order to prepare section eight, statement of significance. And taking photographs of the area and properties for submission with the nomination. Quote, consultant will also attend project meetings with the town, the HPC, and property owners as needed. Um, this last line. Is, I'm assuming is. Okay, the town will manage the administrative aspects of the grant, it's not gonna be HPC, it's gonna be.
The town.
Do you want me to specifically say the department of the town that would be managing the funds of the grant? We're not gonna distribute money.
Yeah, right, so that would be the planning and development department that would um. Yeah, we would, we would send out to finance, whatever the bill is.
Okay. Beneficiaries of the. The beneficiaries at the, at the completion of this project shall be the people of Coventry. I don't know if that's a strong enough statement, I had to say who was benefiting from the project, I might have to. Build stronger words for that.
Okay.
Um. Anything you guys wanna add to this or questions or?
Well, it sounds.
Yeah. Goals and objectives, the goal of this project will be to expand the properties listed on the net. On the National Register of Historic Places for the town of Coventry. The end deliverable of this project will be two submissions to the National Register of Historic Places, one for the village of Green at the. As a historic district and one for the villages of Arkwright and Harris as a single historic district, single. Historic district.
Would that be Arkwright slash Harris?
Yeah, I think that's how we lay it, Arkwright dash.
Like the Hopkins Hollow is slash Roaring Brook.
What if you ask?
Well, I've seen it written both ways, like in, in case of um, Hopkins Hollow and. Roaring Brook, I've seen it written as a hyphen, this is on the state's website, I've seen it as a hyphen and I've seen it as a.
Is Roaring Brook another name for the village, or it's two villages stuck together?
Villages.
It would be the same.
Together, yeah, I think. I don't, I don't know.
So like, like Parterville is also Maple Valley, but it's the same exact space.
Yeah.
Versus Arkwright and Harris are two separate spaces that we're saying right now, just a single district.
Right. Maybe a hyphen would make sense.
Yeah.
I don't know.
They can.
I've seen it.
When we submit it officially, we'll have come through that and the experts should know how to, whether slash or dash.
We look at that in order to. See if there's more mention of.
Right.
Why it is that way, you know?
We'll have to look at that. Right, our question, yes. Maybe for John. Is could. Is Green border Hopkins Hollow and Roaring Brook and would, or it would. It's in a village alone.
That I don't know.
Cause it's very near there.
It shows a line like, like Harris and Arkwright.
Can it be in addition to Hopkins Hollow, Roaring Brook?
So expand that historic district.
Separately. I'm not sure where the lines are. Cause it's not that far from the village of Green. I mean, it could be separate, it's not like Harris Arkwright.
Would that be determined through the expert?
They might recommend adding to the district rather than making.
I'm not sure where the lines are there. Yeah, so it's not far, but it's not like, I know it's not like Harris Arkwright where they're right there on top.
Sometimes the people who live in these places have strong opinions on that.
So that's the other thing, is um. If enough people oppose it, it cannot be added to the register, so there would be a, a statement that would go out to Coventry saying. We're submitting this to the National Historic Register, speak now or forever hold your peace. Um. I did see when I was doing some research that um. Where the heck wasn't? There was only one example, but it has happened where the, the, the people of that area, there was enough of them that said, I don't wanna be a historic district that they did not submit.
Negative connotations of being in a national.
So for us. Nothing, but if you have a strong local historic preservation committee that strictly requires you to follow building rules. Right, you can't, you can't, we don't currently, but here's the thing, once it's a historic district, if later an ordinance is added.
Mm-hmm.
Now we do have authority to tell them that they can't, that they have to come and submit to us. And we have to approve their changes.
But you have to be a local district to do that, that's what the argument has been in the past, when you're a local.
And it would still have to go through town council and all of that process, so they would still have a voice in either reposing it and.
National districts don't necessarily dictate what you can do.
Right, so national district does nothing other than it protects you from the federal government.
Right.
I was just thinking more in terms of. How you identify, like, you know, like, like, but historically or culturally, like, are we part of the village of Green or, or like, is Green its own distinct entity? Or is, you know, is Green lumped in with something else?
Green Village is very small. Green, people that live in Green, it's a. Zip code.
Right, right.
So the historic significance is the Green Village, which is.
Yeah.
Where the railroad runs through, right, yeah, where the rail, yeah. Yeah, so you know, it's not like we're looking to include, include everybody with a green zip code. In it. I mean, that might be. Yeah. Something that might come forward, because it's, it's not everybody who lives in Green.
Okay. So um. That's all stuff we can get into with the consultant if we do get a grant, is how do we, do we wanna try to merge them together, wanna keep it separate, what makes the most sense, um. Okay, so this last part, I don't know how to fill in. Organizational capacity and experience, and this is what it lists in that section, brief description of entity's capacity and experience with delivering similar programs. Um. Have we, has, have we HPC ever managed a grant before?
Yes. Is a CLG?
Yeah. So that's what I gotta put here, is what is our experience with grants? So we, when was that?
I don't know. Was when Caroline Wells was here. Do you know about how long ago that was?
Twenty eighteen?
Yeah.
Around that time.
Yeah.
About twenty eighteen, um, what other experience?
Local district of Payne House. And the uh. Old Town Clerk Office, which is fire dispatch. That was done at the time to create our present um, Preservation Commission.
When, those were also with grants?
Hmm, no, no, that wasn't a grant, sorry.
Okay.
That was when we began. That was when, it wasn't a grant, that's when we began.
Yeah.
Cause we had to have a dis- local district. An ordinance. To create and a his- historic ordinance and a, in order to create the commission. At that time, so no, that didn't have anything to do with the grant, I think our first CLG grant. Is there another one? Early on?
None that I know of.
I think it was Reed School.
Okay.
When they redid the school.
So if you can get, I'll be, I'll just type it in as a general around twenty eighteen, but if you can get specifics for me to put that in.
Yeah.
Um, what about, is there an expert in the? Town for grants that would probably be watching this? We got it.
No, I, I mean, there's been talks about, you know, hiring a grant writer, but there, there's no one.
So this would be more experienced with administering grant, like keeping track of the budget, making sure the consultant's doing what they're supposed to do, dispersing payments to them, so that maybe you don't have. That specific experience with grants, but you have that. You, not you specifically necessarily, but you as in the planning commission.
Yeah, and they worked with Reed, Reed School, went through planning department.
So yes, how can I write this, is that the HPC has applied for, gotten and administered a grant to do the Reed Schoolhouse improvements in twenty eighteen-ish? And also the town of Coventry's Planning and Development Department. Has extensive experience with managing contractors and budgets. Would that work?
Let's go to me.
That's good. Making up words here. Um. Managing contractors and budgets, but it's, okay, that's good. That's all I had, so this is a lot of stuff, I'll update it, um, we need to decide. If we are going in front of the town on the town. Cause I need to send an email requesting to be on the event.
First, can we do a motion on accepting this as what our project is gonna be, cause before we hadn't talked to.
Well, can I ask a question? Um, I, I'm not sure if I understood correctly, so you talked about this being a matching grant. And in order to um, maximize the, um, the, the, the total amount that we are eligible for. You mentioned five thousand? And did I hear something that that would be our total budget, so what else, so we could spend money on anything else?
That's not for this year.
Two sep-.
For twenty twenty-three.
Two separate, two separate things. To, cause if we go in front of the town council on the tenth, you present this and the affidavit, and we try to get them to sign it. Worst case, our budget will not be below five, and if nothing else we can use, and we get the grant, we can use the entire budget to cover our half. However, we are gonna submit. A budget for twenty-three, which may be higher than five thousand. Because we'll didn't, like, which is what we're gonna, I guess that's how I would present it to them, is I'd say. We are, we're not gonna, worst case, you don't increase our budget, we will use our entire budget to cover the cost, we don't want to, but we, we can. So that they can sign it. If the grant doesn't get approved, we have our full budget, if the grant does get approved and we find ways to do in kind. We don't have to actually give them cash, so there's. It's just to me, it's just to, for everyone to feel comfortable enough to sign a paper saying, yes, we will be able to support our fifty percent match. Are you okay with?
Yeah.
Does that, does that feel good, or that feels like? We're not gonna be able to do anything else in twenty twenty-three except this, if we get this grant. It could end up that way, and do we want to do that?
I think, I think you ought to. Take that decision and run with it, and if we don't have other things we can do this year, so be it if we can get the grant. And make something happen.
Cause so many times we've tried to do.
Cause so many times we've tried to do things and we haven't gotten it gotten anywhere. If we got this. Then we have more exposure. As to that we're achieving something.
And when do we have to submit what we um would want for the total budget for other things?
We're trying to talk about.
When do we have, we have to submit it. No later than twenty seven.
That's why we wanted to have this meeting. Cause this has to be submitted. Before our next.
Okay, so.
Added the budget, we kept the budget on there too, because they kind of all.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. For us to uh proceed with a CLG request for adding Arkright, Harris and Green. Historic districts to the National Register. With these words we discussed plus the changes we talked about.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Against? Okay, so voted.
Okay, so am I, so now, am I sending an email to say?
So. Do we want to be on the next, which is Monday, which is Monday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, oh, I thought they had their meetings on Monday.
They changed some to Tuesday. Yeah, because it would be the tenth or the next council meeting after that would be the twenty-fourth.
Which would be political. Cause you have to do that on the twentieth.
The tenth is.
The twentieth, right.
It's Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So the the email that I drafted, which I should have printed, but I sent the draft to Norma, basically says, we're requesting to be on the agenda to talk about this. With the intention that they would um sign the affidavit approving us to move forward and that the funds were available. And there was a secondary item on there. And it has a summary of. Add a minimum five thousand dollars for the budget. Um, so we would cover the cost. And then there was a secondary item to. Ask for an out briefing of. The RFP for reviewing town properties and what needs to be maintained. So. Jen mentioned, there's an RFP out, hire someone to go review all. Town owned buildings and see what needs to be improved on them or upgraded or whatever. Um, because some of those buildings are also historic buildings. She thinks it's important that we um. Be kept in, so that would be the second request in the email. Thank you.
Summary, Coventry Historic Preservation Commission would like to apply for a ten ten thousand dollar federal grant. With Coventry matching five thousand from our CHPC next fiscal year budget. To research and document of the significant. Historical significance of the areas of Coventry known as Arkright, Harris. Located located in the northeastern portion of Coventry in Green. To be submitted to the National Register of Historic Places as historic districts. To start this process, the grant application must be signed by the town town chief elected official or administrative officer and be submitted by twenty January twenty-three. Uh, next steps including asks of the council, can one of the town solicitors please review the grant affidavit and confirm whether it should should be signed by the. ITM or town town council, what's ITM?
Interim Town Manager.
Oh, okay.
I don't know. All right, she wrote it for me and I was supposed to set it up.
I'm ninety-nine percent sure.
Okay, probably. See, I talk in words now. Okay, or the town council. And if it is the town council, whether a resolution is needed. CHP requests this to be added to the ten January agenda. Um, and then she says that for us to review it. Review the grant application and project request application signature request that the upcoming. CHPC. July first, twenty-three budget remains at the annual.
I'm gonna change that word. I'm gonna change those words to say not be reduced below five.
Okay.
Cause I don't want him to think we're not gonna ask for more than five, because we need.
Well, I know, this, so she wrote this and yeah, yeah.
Right, I'm gonna change the words a little bit.
Yeah. Re-separate from this ask, but separate from this. Ask, but related to property reviews. CHPC would like to meet with the ATM Broadbent. To review the list of historic properties against the CIP maintenance RFP that was discussed with the council. In Q four. Then you've got additional background about the city of Providence, six K.
Mm-hmm, I'm gonna add the Central Falls one now that I have that information as well.
Yeah, so that's, that's what you sent to me. Few days ago.
Okay, so I'll make another motion to. Approve sending that email to the town council with the minor changes we talked about. For not to reduce below five thousand rather than a maximum of five thousand. Right after this meeting.
Second. All opposed, all opposed. All in favor? Opposed? So voted, okay, very good. That's done. Next, yeah, okay. Now we have to talk about the budget. Which we did talk a little bit about at our last meeting, but because we're doing this, I thought it. It couldn't be included included while we're here now. So. The budget. So what are we thinking about the budget? If we get this grant, it takes five thousand off the top. What other projects would you consider for next year?
So I remembered on this year's budget, we had a certain amount just for cemetery maintenance, right? It was like four hundred dollars or something?
Yeah, well, more than that was even, I'm gonna say like two sixty-seven. And I think we touched about thirty dollars of it I put in to get reimbursed for um. Okay, it was an IV spray, but I think it's also because I just haven't been able to get the word out that um. Stop paying for them, stop out of your own.
Cause we need receipts.
We need receipts. So anyways, I I just, and I didn't account for um any increases in price um because um. I didn't go through all of the um the materials to see what they're costing in twenty twenty-three versus what they cost. Last year, but just assuming the same. Cost in light of the fact that we didn't come close to. Utilizing that.
So you you have that as two.
Two separate, I have, this is mine and this is what one of the um. Yeah, this two thirty.
This is just from one person, huh?
For the group, like this would be like a. An estimate for all for a whole for whole seasons were. And then the the bottom one is just for that poison Ivy.
So if we made that three hundred for cemetery maintenance, that should be more than five.
Oh, yeah.
We had also talked, um, we talked more than once about the wooden mat thing. Yeah, you'd have to get somebody into, you know. While we were talking about encasing it so that it wouldn't be displayed, um, I asked Rhode Island Historical Society if. They would suggest any, and it was the same place in the immersed. So. So um we had talked about encasing it. So I I wrote to the high school over the holidays. Let's see if their carpentry kids would make the case for it. That it would be hanging somewhere that would have to be strong enough.
I I would suggest that they would need some direction with a drawing or something else.
Oh, yeah, 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 but I just thought if they did it as a project.
No, I don't, I volunteer to do that.
No, I'm just saying, it makes it look like a community project that way.
Yep. I would have to.
You think they could.
I mean, again, it's always best to do it that way, not because it's the school, but for anything.
For anything, yeah.
Yeah, so that it it is showing how it should be constructed and everything.
The right kind of glass to protect it.
So if it wasn't you. Who would we pay to do it?
If it wasn't me, who would what?
Who would we pay to do it? So I guess if we were gonna put something on here to add it to the budget, so if we hired a designer or an architect or.
It would be just, I mean, it would be a consult fee, because you'd go and look at and measure the thing, then you'd. You know, figure out how it should be done and then it'd be drawn up on CAD, so. Five hundred dollars.
And would the high school do it for free or we would? We would pay for the materials.
That's what they do. I haven't heard since.
What's the?
Cause of the holidays.
So would that be two hundred dollars in material? That sounds like a lot. Another hundred in material?
It's a bit, it's it's.
One of the, one of the probably. More expensive parts would be whatever was the clear. Plexi that went on the front of it, because it's fairly good size, so I would say two fifty. For materials.
Five, so what, seven fifty?
I mean, it doesn't take long to. Use up two fifty now.
So make it eight hundred. Eight hundred for a map in case.
Map case, yeah, and that's. Because it, they will be donating at a time to construct it.
And then you have to tell how you're gonna hang it cables or whatever it's gonna take. TPW that would hang it probably.
I mean, a decision would have to be made where it was gonna hang.
It's gonna be heavy. I mean, it's heavy without being encased. So if you want to show it off, that's for sure. You're gonna go through all this.
Yep.
So I mean, if we're not gonna go the ten thousand room, you know, we'll go.
I think it's a good idea that you're gonna preserve it and that's good and that's.
Displayed, it's not hidden away in another room. Yeah, do you remember the dimensions of it?
No, I I'll I'll just have to, now I'll have to look at the measurements again. It's 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 heavy.
Yeah.
It's heavy without.
Yeah.
Being encased.
And it's right at the um, it's in the town hall.
Yeah.
Up against the wall, I think.
I mean, I've looked at it, but I haven't physically tried to see how heavy it was, but it looks like it's heavy.
It's a big piece of wood, so it's heavy. I don't know what kind of wood it's heavy.
Is it accessible for anybody to look at or do you need to get permission? Oh, it's in, it's in the back.
In the conference.
Last I know.
That's right.
Yeah.
So that's one item. Flagpole is the other.
Oh, the flagpole at Reed School to paint?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I thought we were getting that on this year's budget.
Oh, we're gonna do that on this year's budget, yeah.
What's that?
We're gonna do that on this, we could do the sign on this year's, but I'm getting confused with budgets. We can do this on this year's budget.
So we don't need to do.
We can do that on this year's budget.
Okay.
I get confused.
But we will need.
The only other thing is what that we've talked about is the pink granite. Which is another like ten thousand dollars, you said.
Yeah. But that.
Would it be possible? For that type of project to do it in like phases? Where, you know, maybe you don't need the whole, I don't know. Uh, do you need like the whole project as as one or can you?
Piecemeal type of project. The stone would have to be brought there and you, because it's not a long term project, it's gonna take maybe three days to do. And they would take, bring the stone there and then it would get uh. Stone footings put in and you'd set the stone accordingly and. Clean it up and then be done.
There's another thing we could do. I don't know if that's on this year's budget or next. The kiosk, that's at Anthony Green. Is all faded and needs to be replaced. Could we replace that? I have no idea what that.
My questionnaire and not that I've looked at it recently, because I haven't, but is it faded because? The plexi that's protecting it is just discolored or is it what's underneath it? Cause sometime. And I only mention that because we'd need to have it looked at to see, because sometimes it is just the fact that over time. With UV degradation and that, the plexi will get fogged, you know, in a sense, and that's what the problem is, but I don't know, I would have to. I mean, I haven't actually stopped there, looked at that recently. I last year, I was there when I photographed the area and that, because of the. Stone thing that we want to do with the pink granite.
I've also been informed that it's incorrect.
The what?
It's incorrect.
Oh, that's right.
The information that's in the. Which I don't, I haven't really. That has to do with General Green.
Right, so it says something on the plaque that someone. Researched or just wrote on it because of hearsay and now you're he, you're being told it's incorrect. Do you, but how do you prove that it's incorrect? Cause you'd have to cite a reference.
They're gonna have to, yeah, it's up to the Green Homestead to provide.
What is, do you know what they are claiming is incorrect?
I haven't read it. I don't really know yet.
I didn't know if there was something specific.
Did the historic district for Anthony, it's been a while. And I don't know who has the keys to it. It was done by Guy LeFave, so I'm assuming Cox and Red has the keys, but I don't know that.
Do they maintain the area that the grass?
Cox and Rec does that. So they may have the key.
Right.
I'm just mentioning it. I mean, if if it needs to be replaced with plexi or whatever.
When does our? Twenty twenty-two budget end, we don't.
Thirty.
Oh, this month?
This June thirty.
June thirtieth, sorry.
June thirtieth.
So that feels like enough time to make it happen this year.
Can I go back to the pink granite thing again? Just only because there. Obviously, I had a concept for what. I thought would work with that, would, because of the amount of stone we have, the pieces and everything, but in order to make that real. Someone needs to be paid to do like some three D imaging of that. Okay, I could provide the sketches and I've already got stuff sitting in my office that I had done of from the pictures, but. There are people that do that, will take that info with the pictures and make it into something that is a three D image thing. That you can see. And that way it could be presented and there's an expense to that. As to what it is, I don't know yet. I just, if you want me to pursue that. Uh, there is a gentleman right in Phoenix. Uh, Diaz, that is an expert in this stuff. He does it commercially for. People, um, real estate people and other stuff that are trying to sell things and. He has, you know, he does drone footage and all that too, but he's an expert in uh. Imaging, computer imaging, so young guy and whatever, I can ask them, because I know his uncle very well and. I've already approached him about it for uh some other things, so my business stuff, but. I asked him about it specifically for the pink granite thing too, and I just, I would. Find out a little more info on what. It might cost based on me showing them what. We'd need, and it is fairly simple, but in order to sell the town on it and, you know, people on that project, you gotta. Have something decent visually to do that, and that's one way of doing it. So there would be some expense that.
We can do now.
Use for our budget.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yep.
Maybe all.
I think it, yeah, so I think it would be um.
When do you need to know it by?
No, we we have to spend the money by June thirtieth.
Oh, okay.
So as long as we can do the.
I'll find out.
The map placement. And the three D model before June, we could, we could spend this three thou- al- almost all of this three thousand dollars, which would be good, because it shows that we're actually using.
Before our next meeting, I'll try and get info on what potentially, you know, I. Can find out on the fees that they would charge to create, because I I really don't know, you know, how much work that is. I mean, if it was, you know, would from pictures and images and stuff in order to do it, because it's fairly simple. So I don't think it'd be a lot, but I don't, I don't really know.
Two hundred or two thousand.
Yeah, is it right, right, but I I mean, is it? Five hundred or fifteen hundred is, you know, my. Guess the timeframe is, and they might do it more reasonably for. This because of what it is. And they're young and they. You know, like the exposure, so. Is their uncle is a good friend of mine, so he'll put some pressure on.
Yeah, so that could be for this year. Right. So for next year.
So I think we should just put a general miscellaneous maintenance for Reed School and pick a number, because we don't know what we might need. But we want to be able to have it. So like if we put five hundred aside just for miscellaneous maintenance.
Yeah.
Well, if a a window breaks or if there's a leak or something.
Yeah. Which shouldn't, because everything's pretty much new there right now.
You never know.
Oh, I know, I shouldn't say that. Um, yeah, true.
Okay, so I'm keeping notes, but.
About this year. Now, next year, what do we, where?
No, I guess that's a, we're supposed to be talking about what are we proposing for next year. So I'm saying five hundred general maintenance. Three hundred cemetery maintenance.
Yep.
Five thousand grant. Or other proj- other project, right? Or other proj, other project, right, so if we don't get it, we'll use that for something else, but we should have an other project. Of what, of what, cause they're gonna say, well, what other project? So what are we gonna say that's kind of around that price that we would?
I don't know. What would we do if we don't get the grant and now we've got, we need another project, it's not enough for pink granite?
We could. Still hire a consultant and just shrink the scope, so we could use that five thousand no matter what.
Mm-hmm.
And instead of us doing Arkright Harris and Green, we just do Green or we just do Arkright or we just do Harris.
So I just wanna make sure. Just because you're saying, you know, we're gonna need five thousand for the grant, we're gonna need three hundred for this or five, five hundred for that. That's not allocated already, in other words, this is just an ask, so you have a baseline, you don't have to spend it on these items. Um, it's, it's gonna be.
Right, but you, we have to justify why you.
You have to justify it, but if it doesn't happen for whatever reason, or if something else comes up that you guys would rather spend something on. So say for instance, the five hundred dollar maintenance is approved. Um, it's not gonna be five hundred dollar maintenance, it's gonna go into the professional services.
Mm-hmm.
And if something else becomes a higher priority, you guys can spend it on a higher priority instead. So I just want you guys to realize that you're not necessarily picking items that you're allocating this money to. If things do change. These numbers can change as well.
Yeah, once you, so once we get an approved budget, it is just a set amount, we can do whatever we want with it. But we had to justify why we think we need that much in the first.
This is to get you a baseline.
Okay.
So why don't we just leave it at that then? That would be five, six, seven, fifty eight.
Cause I can't, the only other thing would be that plaque. We talked about with that come out of this.
We might be able to do it this year, right, so things that I have for us to try to get done before June are map encasement.
Mm-hmm.
The design, just paying for the design and material, eight hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Um, painting the flagpole.
Mm-hmm.
Potentially replacing the Nathaniel Green plaque, we don't know how much that costs. And the three D image of the pink granite, you said it's five, would you say that was probably gonna be?
Granite project, what do I think that might be?
For a three D image, give me an, just give me, yeah, cause if we're gonna go.
Hundred dollars.
Okay, that kiosk is not just about General Green though, it's about the V. Anthony Village. There's a portion in there that the Homestead is saying is incorrect, so it's not a, 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 General Green.
The Anthony Village plaque.
It's a, a kiosk with, with a.
Is it a paper sign that's in, inside of it?
It's metal.
I mean, in, inside, it's like paper that's encased.
Or whatever, yeah.
It's encased, you know, like that.
Oh, I also wanted to mention, there is a Harris sign.
Mm-hmm.
But the history, that's all peeling.
Yeah.
That needs to be.
It's right there near the bridge.
Yes.
In Harris.
It's, it's got the history. Uh, I know Paul Spr- Sprague had that done, but it's all starting to peel and weather, so um. We need to do something about that sign, take it down, I mean, we're gonna do the brown signs eventually, but that has an actual history of Harris on them.
Is, is that sign that you're referring to um, about Harris, is that in the same style? That's the new one they put up at the Payne House, is, is that, is it similar in the?
No, no, it's a big wooden thing. It's this, it's lengthy. It's on posts.
Yeah.
And it's a wood.
Oh, okay.
It's wood, no, it's not bronze, but it's all peeling, cause it was paint on wood. And it's all being overgrown by the greens, the greenery there, cause it's not being maintained. Like then we need to go get a picture of it.
Can we? Add these five items to uh. Meeting on the twenty sixth. I'm just worried that.
Twenty sixth?
Cause I, six months feels like a lot, but then it's not, like, we're not gonna be able to get these, let it, get them paid for. Okay, so for the agenda for the twenty sixth, I got map encasement project, flagpole painting, Anthony Village plaque. Three D image of pink granite and the house plaque.
Okay, okay.
And all of that's gonna be this year, so our.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty three budget request is gonna be fifty eight hundred.
Yeah, okay, so, so I'm good, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So we have to make a motion.
Do we need a motion for that?
That we're gonna make the proposal fifty eight hundred for the twenty twenty three budget.
Yeah, that works.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we would propose for the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget to be five thousand eight hundred dollars. With the um, five hundred for general maintenance of the Reed Schoolhouse, three hundred for cemetery maintenance. And five thousand for a significant project, most likely the grant.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, so. That pretty much covers our agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, uh, do we do public permit?
See if John's with us tonight. Anybody's with us tonight.
I certainly am, how is everybody tonight?
Good.
Hello.
Hi, hey, um, just a point of interest, uh, we were talking about what was the name of the uh religious meeting that they had in Green. It was called the uh revival camp meeting, and interestingly enough, in the eighteen eighties. Uh, ten to fifteen thousand people would descend on Green for what they were calling the Big Sunday. And the, the railroad made accommodations, they added extra cars and reduced the rates so everybody could come. So I just wanna bring that up, cause it's got my thinking going when I heard you guys mention it, that's it.
Yeah, it was, that was very significant, I have some good pictures of that, a couple of, you know, them actually at the meeting, so.
I think it was that many, that's.
Oh, yes, that was.
Yeah, it was, it was actually, um, it started out in one tent on the corner and I forgot the name of the streets and, and Green. Uh, but it ended up uh where they purchased fifty acres in Green. And started putting up um cabins and other hard structure on fifty acres, so it became a pretty big deal.
Nick, if I give you my email, will you, would you be willing to send me anything you thinks. Uh, significant that I should be adding to this grant about the uh historic significance of these three areas?
Yeah, I, I could do that, so we would be looking at Arkright Harris and Green.
Yes, please.
Okay, yeah, I can make uh, from some, some of the uh references I have here, um, I can make you a bulleted list.
Okay, you wanna, do you wanna take down my uh email address?
Yes, go ahead.
Erin, E R I N dot F as in Frank, dot Brewster, B R E W S T E R.
I'm sorry.
I know, you're talking fast, sorry.
My, my pen ran out of ink at the worst possible time, could you start over?
Erin, E R I N dot F as in Frank, dot Brewster, B R E W S T E R. At Gmail.
Think you should have made it a little longer.
Yeah, it's my whole name, it's easy to remember.
Okay, so I'll repeat it, um, Erin F, Erin dot F dot Brewster at Gmail.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, I'll send you something uh tomorrow or the next day.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Yep.
See the only one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So. Anything else before we adjourn? We have an motion to adjourn.
So. Only question I have is, so is that mean we will be? On the agenda on Tuesday?
Hoping, cause I, we're supposed, the agenda's supposed to be made a week ahead of time, so technically agenda's already made. But they make modification of the agenda all the time, so I feel okay, because Jen knew we were gonna submit, so I'm sure she had a conversation saying. Just keep in mind, you're gonna have to add them to the list.
And my other. Just be aware, um, there is a forty eight hour requirement, so they'll be posting at the very, very latest, they'll be posting by the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay, I'm gonna send it tonight.
Okay.
And, and the other thing I wasn't clear on, when do you have to have the, the application in for the grant?
The twentieth.
Twentieth, okay.
Eleven fifty nine.
Yep.
PM.
Yep, okay.
I'll probably be typing just up until that point.
I'm just gonna recognize personally that I truly happy with all the work that Erin has done.
Yes.
Yeah.
Amazing.
She's really working hard.
Those are stuff. I don't actually, that's not, I took the kids driving around last weekend, I'm like, let's go drive around.
She's texting me, tell me about this, tell me about.
Oh, that, that place is gorgeous, we should do something to fix that.
Well, that's another thing.
That's another.
Involves the state.
Something by the state.
We've got. But the, I mean, the walls are perfectly fine, it's beautiful, just needs a roof and some stuff up.
Not, another discussion for another project.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'd say, historic buildings, we're gonna have to. Contact whoever. Yeah, before we can do anything.
Yeah.
You're gonna adjourn the meeting?
Yeah, anyway.
Um. I made all the main thing.
I'll, you've taken all of them. I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. All in favor?
I.
Opposed?